Thank you, sir. The process we will be following is laid out there. We're starting at the optional phase to preliminary random representation program. We'll open it up for public comment. And then we will start working on asking him questions. We'll go with conditions. Before we adjourn this meeting, we are going to, I am going to ask somebody to make a motion to authorize the village to hire a engineer. So once we have all the conditions set, we'll actually back an engineer and then we we will have the village engineer review plus review the seekers. And then when he and we are satisfied, then it'll go to the D E C for an update on the SWIP. But he can't update the SWIP until he knows what we're wanting.
Okay.
So once the SWIP is done and we have stamped plans, everything's to our liking, we'll be in the final location. We'll review. We don't have to have a public carry if we already had one. We don't have to county referral because that's already been done. Planning board. That's it we got here. So that's basically the steps we have.
The role of the engineer that's being requested is to review their, their plans.
Their plans. See if the seeker needs updating. Let us, you know, be in line with us and
And then ultimately to provide input to us on the parameters of the SWIP.
Right.
Compliance with the SWIP.
So like I said originally, it's not going to be a quick process, but due to law, we do have 62 days unless Brandon gives us some extension. He may be a little weary of that because we asked him for an extension and he waved timeline. He didn't say, okay, I can get an extra 30 just wait. Year later.
So, okay, so what you'd like to see us do is tonight, I'm up where we had 1916, 1917.
Right.
We want to come up with again our lists.
We'll come up with lists. Some of those are done, like the top of math. Some of them likely down at the bottom where we talked about new zones. When we were dividing up the upper level into
Right. That's no longer applicable.
Right.
Right. The covering of the manhole.
Right. So some of those are applicable and we probably want to add some.
Right. Is it worth noting that this is no longer a site plan review for a commercial parking lot? That's up for a boat storage.
Right.
And without any, and a retail boat storage, so not part of another marine business. Which he's conducting there now with the materials that he has there. So
Well, what materials in his application, if you look at the map at the bottom is gray areas.
Right. But it says proposed, so that hasn't come to us yet.
That's right. But that, you know, is something he's going to ask for. Do we have to give it to him? No. Am I? Yes. That's something we'll have to make a decision on. The like I said, you know, we have to come up with these conditions. They can be conditioned to set the guidelines. Steve? Are you unmuted?
Yeah, sorry I'm late.
Oh, that's all right. I, I sent out an email kind of late today with a PDF called site plan review. Spells out the process that will be following on page five. More details about are on page four and six. It's from the State Department.
Yeah, I reviewed that and I reviewed the conditions that the planning board had established previously to the zoning approval.
Okay.
So it, there might be a little background noise. I'm up in New Hampshire visiting for Easter, visiting my daughter and her four kids.
My daughter from Vermont was just here. She lives on the New Hampshire Vermont border.
There must be something in the water because she just announced that she's having another by, another baby. Number five, so.
Catching up with the candidates.
Yeah, that's what they used to blame it on when I was a teacher, you know, once I we get three or four of them pregnant at the same time and it's in the water.
Well, hopefully they'll figure it out, right?
At some point. Okay, so
Is that how these things?
We just, you know, spelling out that following that plan will randomly present tonight. We'll have public comment period, then we'll start our review. We can ask him questions. We can start generating conditions. Some point this evening, we will have a motion to have the village hire an engineer to assist us with review of the site plan and the seekers. And that way we'll make sure everything is in line with what should be, what we want.
But we, we won't have to have all of the conditions thought up tonight, or we?
No, no. Like I said, we have 62 days.
Oh, so we don't have to come up with all of these conditions.
No, no. But we're going to start. And as I said, you know, there's a lot to get done and we may have to schedule what to do with extra meetings. And, you know, we might approach Brandon and ask for, if time is getting tight, ask him for 30 day extension. Otherwise, let's talk to our lawyer and see what our options are.
And if we put more conditions on and he doesn't like it?
Well, then he doesn't have to do it.
Okay.
He can withhold his application.
Okay.
You know, he, he's got a special net use permit. And he he should know.
Just a question. I didn't notice it. Maybe I missed it in some minute, minutes somewhere, but what was the vote for, for the last planning board's approval of conditions?
The vote, that was
Before my time.
2022. I think it was unanimous. I don't recall. The conditions, the 19 conditions, what was the vote at that time? I think it was unanimous.
I think it was unanimous.
Not only conditions, as we know, I was, I was trying to figure out what the date was.
It was April 4th, 2022.
But it was a unanimous.
No, that's, it was March 21st.
Thank you.
So
2023.
2022.
As you can see, we there wasn't a spell on it because that was at the end of the year of work.
And then who, you had said some of these are done. Is there a list or are we updating this list or is that part of this process so that we cross off the ones that are done?
Yeah, we'll cross it off.
Okay.
I think I went up on Bill's question before, just so I understand it. Originally, this site was associated with the Marina expansion.
It still?
It still is?
Right.
Okay, so it really doesn't change that. It just changes the nature of what the site is being used for in connection with that expansion. Okay. Another question. Was there going to the county's review and the zoning board's approval? Were the I'm sorry, I wasn't present for either of those discussions. Were the dimensions of the equipment parking area discussed or is that?
No, they were not.
Is that?
Not to the best of my knowledge.
Okay. And is that, is that open for discussion?
Yes.
Okay. And in connection with that, was there any discussion of what constitutes marine construction equipment?
Hello?
So, you know, presumably that could include cranes and dredging equipment and barges and
Well, I don't.
I don't know that that's realistic, but it conceivably could.
So you would suggest we should define it more clearly?
Oh, clearly, yeah. What can? So is, do you have a list of what we did? So to give you an example for if you look at number nine, says striping shall be regular by 30s. That's not going to be on this because the striping referred to has a parking lot.
Okay.
So there are a number of items here that aren't applicable anymore.
Uh, number five. We have a top graphical map that was forced on him by a D E C when he had to apply to get a strength.
And then like, like number 11, how, and, and this may be, you guys might already know this, but how is that governed? You know, how, how, how is that enforced? Like, does somebody complain about it and then you go look at it or is it a periodic check that the code enforcement?
Well, if there's a complaint, give it a check.
So only if there's a complaint?
But I think to your point, based on lessons learned, we're going to be more specific in that we got a
Hello, Brendan.
Hello, everyone. Hey, Brendan.
Oh. Just FYI for anybody, we have a change. Stop struggling. It was changed to mine again.
Oh, okay. So here's
No, it changed his mind today.
Again?
Yep.
Again, again.
Uh huh.
He going back to the original place?
From what he said today, he's going, remember he done the extension, then he went over to the extension, he was just going to remodel, then he's going to the extension. Now he's just going to remodel. So we'll see what happens.
Next week?
Stay tuned.
Oh. We are, I have to dig in.
To your point, Alan, the zoning board began that process by saying no outdoor storage of boats, cars, whatever they said. Okay. Boats, cars, RVs on the upper level. Which which could be calling the question whether it's permissible down at the lower level.
Right. Yeah. Great. Thank you. Things get put in like from the plan, like Microsoft project. Do these get put in a project plan, something like this that has
Those kind of have a giant phone with everything.
Yes, it's
But it's not, no.
It's not a new one. Okay, it's not a soft copy. Okay, no.
No. I have the minutes and things from
Yes, I read through all that.
Give you an idea. This is most of the documentation of the last number of years. Unless not even all.
Wow. Thank you.
We got it in the back there. And it's troubling here, so I could ask him about Cottressel.
I apologize. I was assigned a it's tense. Assignment for a pre-meeting discussion for this meeting. I didn't follow through, so I'll follow this order.
I think we have a not to keep this.
Yeah, I know.
Okay, it is seven o'clock. Time to begin our meeting. They're asleep. This meeting was advertised on the village website in the Wayne County. On first evening.
I'm Bill McKee.
Name is Pogary.
Bill Cappin.
Ellen Farm. Linda Youngman.
Okay. Our first action is to review the minutes from our last meeting as April 7.
I move that we accept the minutes as submitted and amended.
I'll second that.
All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? There are no opposition. It is passed. Our first application tonight is Susan Hill. If you'd like to step up and tell us, there were some changes since it started last.
Sure. So since the last time we saw you, we've got the stamp blueprint architectural drawings. We've decided to build it in elevation of 251. I mean, you know, so we're implying that flood plain variations. The drawing does show flood vents on there, but those won't be required anymore since we are going to be building at the 251. And let's see, what else has happened since last time? Oh, well, last Monday on the 14th, we received approval from the zoning board for our area variance. So we're approved to build five feet from the property line where one and a half that is required.
We moved it closer to the house also.
We, yes, we moved it closer to the house as well to, you know, cooperate with our neighbor and just have the garage moved a little bit closer to ours so it won't block windows on the adjacent side.
It was nice when y'all stayed out when we went down there.
Oh, yes, a couple of you swam by today to do your homework and check. So yes, we did have White Green come by and give us a benchmark for the elevation and he staked out the whole detached garage structure. So we make sure we build in the right place. So trying to get all our i's dotted and t's crossed. So are there any questions about the stamp blueprint specification?
I'll go. I have no questions.
I have none.
I'm good. There are more. We approved the application for the construction of a of a 36, 32 by 28 garage. Per the stamped plans for 874, I just lost it. 7428 Orford Street.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All right. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? There are no opposition. It is passed.
Congratulations. Not changing.
It's the work of each group.
All right. Mr. Martin, I should go step up and present your proposal.
It's shorter than the last time.
You can call the county needs.
Appreciate it. I want to thank everyone for having me here tonight. To say this has been a long process would be an understatement. I think you all know the amount of time and energy we have all spent going through this process. I have some beliefs on why it has taken so long, but I will not confuse this process with allegations and just stick to the facts. To give you guys a little bit of history. Our application has been approved by New York State D E C for storm water management runoff. The Sodas Point Planning Board, you guys yourselves have approved for a special use permit. The Wayne County Planning Board Wayne County Planning Board has approved for the special use permit and site plan. The Sodas Point Zoning Board for the special use permit. We are all here now to approve the site plan for our buildings and the acceptance of the grading plan that I said has been approved by D E C. I want to take a quick minute to remind everyone, though this is now past the point of special use permit and my use has been granted by the zoning board. I have a slideshow again, if you need it, for the special use permit. The planning board, from my research, cannot put conditions on a special use permit. The conditions that have been opposed were done by the zoning board and I will follow them conditions in regards to the use. I will not agree to any conditions that affect the use of boat storage or limit my allowances that everyone else in the village gets to enjoy on the property. As I said before, you is a current grading plan that has been approved by New York State D E C. On that plan, I have placed the location of the buildings with their dimensions. I have gone through section 190 dash 49 with my engineer to make sure we meet all the requirements for the site plan. I have gone through the master plan and have shown that my plans are supported by the L W R P. I have given the board a completed preliminary application so that a decision can be made tonight and the process can move forward. The buildings have no lights on the outside to respect my neighbors. Security cameras will be mounted on the buildings for security purposes only. Any new vegetation, vegetation that is requested will need to be approved by D E C as it may affect the SWIP. Speaking of the SWIP, I fully understand that the village has brought up an idea of having an engineer review my project at my expense. Given that the last time this burden was brought to my attention, I had quite a large bill, I would ask that the village seek the lowest bid or review from a qualified individual. I believe in regards to my preliminary application, I have done everything this board has asked me and gone above and beyond the book more than that is asked by any other applicant. I want to also bring up comments that have been thrown around by the zoning board meeting about materials and equipment I am intending to store in the residential area. My reason for storing that material and equipment in this area is that it will be hidden nine months out of the year due to natural vegetation surrounding that lowland. I have been told this is the definition of marine construction. So let me ask the board. What is the definition of marine construction? Because I do not see it in your book. Do you guys have it in there and I'm dismissing it?
At this point, I do not believe we have one. Let me defer to Kevin.
Yep.
At this point, do we have the definition of marine construction?
No, I don't have one in zoning right now.
Thank you.
My business does more than just marine construction and most of the equipment and materials stored out of sight will be used for other things other than just marine construction operations. Therefore, the closest thing I could see in your code book out of the 190 chapter is the definition of a contractor's yard, which states, "Any space, whether inside or outside a building, used to store or keep construction equipment, materials, machinery, vehicles, or parts thereof, and activities used by the construction contractors." Nowhere that I could find does it say that I am not allowed to have a contractor's yard nor do I have to ask permission under the use chart for a contractor's yard. I assume this is how the brands and other businesses have gotten the ability to operate their marine construction business and contractors without prior approval. Oh wait, marine brands don't have a marine construction business, but I've seen them repair docks and boathoys. It's pretty easy to twist things around and vandalize someone. I am sorry, I don't mean to attack someone, but it's just how I have been treated. The past year, I have been attempting to continue the development in my business and grow in the community. It is not fair for the village to discriminate against my application differently than any other person in this village. Frankly, every time I come to a meeting, I am scheduled last, every single meeting, no matter what board. I am given the longest and most lengthy process and always met with some kind of fight even though I'm doing things to fuel development. I am told no matter where my project is, it's the wrong project for the site. Is that the wrong project or just the wrong person? Therefore, I again am requesting a preliminary site plan approval so that I can give any and all changes to my engineer, Mark's engineering firm, to give me a final SWIP that will go back to DC and go back to your village engineer to be reviewed so that I can move forward with my final site plan approval. I am not prepared to miss another boating boat storage season due to the village boards dragging their feet on my reviews. The final few things I would like to add before we talk about it themselves is that I am fully aware that these buildings are going to have a large metal wall. In the other, in zoning, I stated much like the mall house and the fire call about putting a mural or something like that on the side of the building. As the master plan that the Duist Belair so kindly created encourages waterfront-related projects and remember our historic belongings. Sodos Point was constructed and for boating businesses and my project not only continues that history, but will hopefully showcase it with potential historic murals. Thank you for all for your time.
Thank you. All right, you have a seat. Open us a public comment.
We name, Martha Pastich, residing in 8634 Gregg Street. I think there's a lot of issues that are incomplete in the plans as proposed. I find it kind of surprising that for the amount of time the applicant has indicated he's been working on this, that there is an awful lot of deficiencies. Instead of trying to hit everything, just kind of limited the discussion to two items. And I got a couple of captions here in my comments. So, you know, as far as use, I'm going to pass on that, but if you look at the definition of industrial uses, two things that are mentioned are material storage and boat storage under industrial. That's maybe water over the dam. The other thing is all the different things that were required of the applicant during the seeker process initially. I'm going to skip over those because they shouldn't be even open for discussion. They should be addressed like they should have been addressed quite some time ago. As far as seeker, you know, seeker needs to be revisited. In your file at the town, the last seeker is seeker that was previously done. It doesn't address this plan, it doesn't address these buildings, it doesn't address what's going on. I think at a minimum, you need to get a new EAF that reflects what the plan is being proposed and it should address, you know, items that are changing such as land use, zoning, bulk requirements, traffic, drainage, erosion control, the dredge material that is still part of the plan, buffering, landscaping, lighting. You know, you have to either modify it or it has to be redone, but seeker has to be addressed and you need the information in front of you to address it. And that will be part of the plan too. Seeker needs to be addressed prior to any other approvals. You can't give a preliminary approval until you do seeker and seeker, you need information for. So the site plan requirements in 149, 1E, I think it is, site plan showing location, proposed use, not the whole buildings. You know, just details, but they're not shown. There is dimensions on it, but it's not the area, not the height, not the use. Loading areas, access, egress, egress, there's no, there's no access. The front of the site plan right now has just been kind of wiped out. The plan doesn't really reflect anything. It's an old plan that some new buildings have just popped in and really the rear portion was revised somewhat, but the front is not revised at all. Location of outdoor storage, that is shown. Is that the limit to any outdoor storage? There's no outdoor storage above, it's only shown in one place. Sidewalks, pedestrian access, it's not shown. If any drains, culverts, you know, usually with a preliminary set plan, they have a utility plan that shows is there water to buildings, is there sewer, storm? What are the size of the culverts, how does the water get there, catch basins, details. Retaining walls and fences. I'll get into the grading, but the grading doesn't work. And, you know, you really do need a professional to look at the grading because some of the grades on there, if you look at the site plan that's submitted where there are grades shown, some of those grades are one-on-one. You can't, they're steeper than what's out there. What's out there on the plan, you can look at the spacing, the contours. And at best, they're one-on-two, which is very steep. There's proposed grades one-on-one. The ponds are shown at a one-on-two. DC requirements require a one-on-four requirement. So I don't know what DC is doing. I don't see any correspondence in the file whatsoever. So I don't know how you make a decision without any correspondence. But it's not there and it's not meeting the requirements of New York State. Description and method of stormwater drainage. The SWIP has been talked about, talked about, but it's based upon an old plan. The SWIP needs to be updated. To do seeker, you really need things updated. You can't make a decision on variations of plans that are old. The signs are not going to be done, that's fine, but you know, you probably do need some directional signage, pavement markings, things like that. These are just your requirements. I think there's a lot more requirements, but these are what your code says you guys should see. You know, and it's not the greatest code, but you got to at least work with it, yeah. Design of lighting, it keeps saying there's no lighting, but I think normal buildings have to have lighting at the entrances, over the doors, I think that's called. So there should be an idea, if they're going to be baronized, they're going to have wire, they're going to have objection to the neighbors. Retail sales, factious for consideration. Adequacy and arrangement of vehicle traffic circulation. There's no entrance even shown. I think the layers are just turned off. The plan is hastily done and there's just the whole front of the site kind of doesn't comply to anything. It's just open and nothing. You really do need some sort of traffic control. Adequacy, arrangement of traffic access, circulation, separation pedestrian, that's your code. You know, I'm not sure how much there is to do there, but nothing's shown. Parking, loading, landscaping, curbs, provisions, pedestrian and vehicle traffic, it's not shown. Buffering, I think is a big requirement and it was part of the seeker also to have buffering, which was not done from the original and there's nothing shown. Any, I don't know, any DC requirement to have landscaping, but they're too high now. The DC doesn't review landscaping. You don't have multiple drawings, it's not applicable. Drainage and sewer facilities, I mean, it's, there is a SWIP. It's pretty much bare bones. There's a lot of detail needed. Again, the grading is just not working. And the ponds, you know, stormwater, DC has a certain jurisdiction. They look at erosion sediment control, they don't look at flooding. That's not their jurisdiction. You as the town or the village want to look at downstream drainage. Even if he has a SWIP that says, "I'm reducing the runoff by 10% or something." Well, if it's 10% more or if it's going to cost funding downstream, it's his obligation to look at. I think the downstream drainage is very confusing and I've seen the village get into a lot of trouble with downstream drainage. I would hope that you would take a look and have a professional look at what's going on to make sure you're not creating problems for yourself in the future. Erosion and sediment control, this site's been filled, it's been filled 10 to 20 feet or it's 10 to 15 feet. It's not your typical site in the village. It is a very steep slope, filled site. And I even question putting a building on that much fill, that is, it's just junk. So I think you really need a professional, I hope that you engage one prior to issuing approvals of any sort and issuing seeker. Thank you.
Person here, if you would like to.
I haven't found one yet, so.
All right. On Zoom, if you would like to comment, please unmute yourself and do so. Once again, if you'd like to comment on your own Zoom, mute yourself. All right, here in nobody on Zoom, we're going to close the public comment section. All right.
I would just like to comment. Not once have I ever seen Mark stand over another's application and tell the board how to do their job. This is just the jealous attack by a resident. I could slam him all over the place on work that he's performed that's failed his community. DC did their job, they figured it out whether he wants to admit it or not. And I heard a professional engineer that's came up with a plan in front of you guys.
Start turning for questions. First question, Brandon, since we don't have detailed plans yet on the buildings. If my memory serves me correctly, you said you parked the trailer there to give us an idea of the height.
Yes. I'm sure there's a 13.6 off the ground, so the door opening would be 14 in order to get that in.
And the peak would be?
So that would make the eve at 16 foot. 412 pitch, half the dome at 30 would make the peak of the building at 26. Which is well below the.
You're. Obviously, we'll be setting some conditions. I know that you said, "I don't agree to any," but then you said, "Well, landscaping."
Yeah, I specified what that was, you started with the use.
There will be some conditions, okay? What we plan, what I plan on leaving is we'll have discussion with you that will generate conditions if we want to be included. We will have you and give it to your engineers. Get a multiple updated plan. We will, in the meantime, have the village hire an engineer who will review your plans once you have them, also review the seekers. Won't be able to get your SWIP updated until you have at least that much. I know we've been at this for a while, we've come a long ways in the last few months, so.
Yeah, I don't have any disagreements on what you're saying. I just, that's what tonight's meeting is about, right? I mean, I don't want to go to another meeting. I mean, you give me the conditions tonight, then I go get them done.
Well, I have at least one more meeting before we give the.
Not to rebut, but why? I mean, doesn't, private's been around a while, everybody's got to know their condition, right?
I think there's a fair amount that's still, still needs to be added to the, to the plan. One of the things that occurs to me, Brandon, is, and you've mentioned it before, I think when you were here before, you mentioned that there would be a lot of additional fill added to level, the lower level of the, of the site and create a pad placement for the new buildings. For example, what is, what is that material? For example, what is, what is that material? Okay, and I'm not any kind of a water engineer, but what is, will that material impact? The calculations that have to be performed for part of the SWIP. So I think knowing what that material is, it's gonna be brought in.
I, I understand, I understand the question. My, my, what I'm trying to understand is, how does that change what you guys are approving? Because if I tell you it's stone or whatever, wouldn't that be what D C and all them are doing for the SWIP? Why? When it comes to this board, and, and that's fine, if that's the question, that's what's gotta be.
Well, I can see it right before the horse. Okay, knowing that information is gonna feed into Seeker, is gonna feed into SWIP, so that information needs to be known.
How do we know that it needs any, any fill brought in?
I don't know, you mentioned it. That's why I'm bringing it up.
We're gonna grade the land to meet that plan. If there's extra fill on that land, it'll be hauled out. If there's fill that's needed, it'll be hauled out.
And if there's to be added, it would be?
Hauled in.
What would it be? And then there's a compacted stone area for the.
That's just what I'm asking. Is, is that something that this board does?
I think it needs to be known ultimately. I don't wanna, I'd rather bring it up now than have you say and.
That's what I, I guess that's what I'm just asking. I, I, and, and you can just give me the answer that, that yes, this board does. I just wanna know that it's documented, that I'm treated to paying. Every time there's fill in this village, you guys do that for every one of them? Or am I being treated different? That's all. If there's different things, that's what I want that list. Hey, look, I need to have fill and I'll have that on there. I just want them to be the same as everybody else. That's all I'm asking. And when you're coming up with the same spare, as long as it's with everybody, that's no problem.
I haven't encountered that many fill things in my turn, but.
Definitely write something up and show you how many times you guys have, because I've already done some research on it, on how many barns have been built on fill. And not one question has ever been dropped upon us.
And where plans they do describe the fill, it's usually crushed stone.
I can, I can.
Compacted to ex-erosed areas, you guys never asked, not one thing. This whole thing is built on fill and it's sand up there.
And not one question was ever asked on being treated differently.
No, we did ask that. We did, we commented on the sand, whether or not that was. Going to be stable enough for him to build the building and that was.
And what was the answer?
He assured us that it was.
I put in there, it'd be good enough for a building. That, that's what I'm saying. I'm just making an example. I mean, it's pretty easy to say.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? But there's no engineering thing that you're telling me. There's no nothing, is what I'm trying.
There wasn't a SWIP required for that one. There is, there is for this one, okay? Because of that magnitude of the site.
He did have one actually up on that side.
Did he?
Yes.
The. On Route 14 across the street from you?
No.
Oh. Never mind, okay.
We're not talking about that one either. We're talking about Lake Road, but, but yes. But I am ready to, to tell anything. I'm not ready to give opinion to you guys, but I'm just saying, give me the list now and I'll make sure that it's added. Just wanna be fair, let's just done that.
That's what I was driving for.
You got it.
Okay. Brandon, there's also a reference on this, on the plan that I think is old reference to the car wash. Car wash is gone.
The car wash is gone, so.
Okay, so that needs to make its way.
You got it.
I'm here.
Kevin?
Yep.
What I, I have not seen any requirement for outside lighting on buildings. They're such a code.
Yeah, so I was just looking it up under chapter 10 of the building code. So if I classify these. As an S occupancy, which I think they are, there has to be one foot candle of illumination at all exits. From it for, for the building. So at the man door, there would have to be one foot candle. If I classify them as a U occupancy, which I don't think we would want to do, just reading. I'm pretty sure it's gonna be classified as an S. So if it's an S, then it's gonna be, let me give you the exact. All right. So it is. Ignition level, yeah, one foot candle at the walking surface.
That's not overhead, it's just walk-ins.
Say that again?
That no overhead doors, just the walk-in doors?
The path of egress.
Gotcha, okay. All right, I'll have that added.
Okay, we will want those down pointing, so that white pollution. Kevin, do not be motion activated or do it as being on dust to dawn.
It says. Power supply means of egress. Electrical supply. I'm just making sure I read it really quickly. They have to be on at all times, it looks like.
All right. So.
So it always has to provide that, that one foot candle at the walking surface.
Down pointing. We don't want escaping the area. I don't think you wanna pay the record to light up your neighbors.
No Batman lights, yeah.
Landscaping. In our original conditions. We had all sides are to be. Of the filled area are to be finished with four to six inches of topsoil and fill for planting cover plants. But northwest, south sides are to be covered with weeping grass and east well. Side with crown patch. We also had. The north, south, west sides extending the entire range of C P L S. Which is now the upper. Or to be screened utilizing berms. Four feet or greater in height, also mix of net green trees, minimum of six feet height. Four feet on center or arborvitae and plants.
I, I agree on that. Are we changing any of it or no?
Well, now that we're extending down into the lower area. I would like to extend at least on the north side. That coming down to screen your neighbor on north.
Okay.
I don't think it would need burned, but. Screening down that side.
It also occurs to me, and you mentioned it before, Brandon, nine months a year, those neighbors that are off to the east. Won't be able to see too much of the lower outdoor parking area, but. The other three or four months a year, they will be. So it might be something for us to consider to. Add some, some pines to that, to your easternmost border area. And as they grow up, they'll provide a 12 volt shield to visually, to those residences up there.
Which residents are you?
The ones up on, it's a hillside.
You mean the houses across from the light tower, the water tower?
The houses beneath the water tower, yeah.
Right, yeah. Where are the houses on?
Pardon me?
Where are the houses? If there's any houses along that side.
There's a new one, it just went up.
Yeah, on that side of the road?
Yeah. Yeah.
Across from my property.
Yeah. And then Matt Albertazzi or whatever his name is, who lives over next to me, has that rental property that he did. Your state is red one on the corner. But then there's, there's several of them going down there. And then Tom Knapp has two of those lots for sale. So, you know, they're gonna be developed at some point. So I think it's, it's appropriate to consider some further twelve month screen.
I just, I just wanna show you that when I'm talking, there's the water tower.
Yep.
Here's my property.
Yeah, yeah.
And here's no houses completely at all.
No, 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 other, other side of the street.
Right.
The east side of the street.
Where your fingers? Oh, okay.
Okay.
You know, if you're on that side of the street, you can't look down the hill. That's all I'm saying.
Yeah, but they're up. I was just up there.
They can see.
So you can see the base of the hill?
Yeah. You can see it from the road, let alone from the even higher elevation of that. Of that, every side of the street, yeah.
Be careful, that makes sense.
Well, I was offered a suggestion in the first step board here. It's not applying on my work, but. But it seems reasonable. One of the things that we talked about when we were discussing the, the RV part. Was the addition of a fire hydrant. Is there a? With these buildings being added and with the storage of vehicles that probably are full of gas. Because most people like to leave their tanks full over the, over the season. Is it reasonable to consider that there's a fire hydrant, Kevin?
There isn't.
Big reason for the fire hydrant, were you asking me?
Oh, okay. I didn't, I didn't, I'm gonna go back.
When I put the stones around in the ditch there or that little swell?
Yeah. I, I presume that that would be good for the, for the buildings down below too, Kevin?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, the big reason for the fire hydrant over at the other property, the. The Maxim's property was they wanted to go over the allowed size for it. And in order to do that, there had to be a fire hydrant within so, so far. So the health department and us had to work to get the correct. Water main size in there so that it can be dedicated back with the fire hydrant to allow them to go over the size and not have to sprinkler the building.
Okay.
So as long as he's within, I, I can look up the, the range, but if there's a hydrant right in front, I don't think that's gonna be a problem. And then there's probably a hydrant at the top of the hill too, on hillside, I assume, that they would probably use as well if they had to.
They were, or not a whole one.
All right. One of the conditions that the. Zoning board put on. Said all marine supplies, equipment and materials are restored on the lower level in the air. Area designated for such use in this site plan. Okay. I would just. Change that to say all supplies, since we're having problems with what is a marine equipment, marine supplies. It stays down. You know, the top. Enough for storage.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's my intention as well.
Oh, I'd like to ask a question because this application really is. A new application from the, it is, that's from the parking lot application. And in this application, the description refers to it being boat storage. Retail business. Which would assume business connected with the boats and what you do within. How you store them. It says nothing about storing anything that's connected with the. Marine business or the construction part of your business. So are we mixing apples and oranges here? Is it part of it's gonna be? Part of the marine construction business?
It's a contrary.
But you're not asking for that either.
I don't have to, it's in special use. I don't have to ask that.
Then we just need to. Define what we will allow there. And what we won't.
Discuss or talk about a construction yard, what do you envision?
What I envision is everything that you guys see up by the road, going down behind that barn where I located that area. So that way it shouldn't, that's, that's what I envision.
I don't wanna see it all go down there.
A lot of it's gonna be cleaned up. A lot of that village are, we're putting in brand new floating docks. A lot of that is old floating docks that stacked up there and they're for sale, right? And as soon as you buy them, I'll get them right out of there and move them to your yard. No, I, I, I plan on. They're either gonna sell on the smash and on the scramble. So, once I gotta do it, I'm not gonna move them 100 times either, you know, so.
I don't want, but I, I don't wanna see that stuff go down there. I don't wanna see that, that type of thing accumulate going forward, either.
Well, I've said, I've said that a lot of this is right down at the, down on the hill. Dave Brant has got a pile of metal that sits there all the time. So we can't do one for one and not for the other, but I don't plan on that.
Magnitude is considerably different. Yeah, I think what we're saying is, we don't wanna be in this position that the town was in. With a piece of property up on Ridge Road that took them years to finally begin to clean up. And the process that that took. We don't wanna have a junkyard.
Are you talking about the one across from the triangle piece?
Yeah.
Though, as you see, other than being stopped at this project, I continue to clean everything up to do. Everything. We're not looking.
I think you do, unfortunately, and ends up up there.
Well, that's where, that's where it stopped. You know what I mean? Unfortunately, that's where it is right now, but.
But getting back to the question, so is your plan still to use? The material that you were dredging or wanna dredge and putting it up there?
That is part of the SWIP plan, yes. So dredge material will go up there and it will make the berms. And it will make, it will, it will. The hills that we have to cover in order to plant the crown batch and stuff like that, so yes. So we'll grade, I'm assuming there's gonna be enough dirt to almost do that stuff. And then when we, so it will look presentable and nice. And then when we dredge and put it up there and then reseed it again. You know what I mean? So it's not gonna sit unfinished until I dredge it, if that is something. I'm not gonna just do it and say, hey, guys, I haven't, I can't dredge for another year. Those, you're gonna look at, you know, like a dirt hill until then. I plan on finishing it and then when we dredge the marina, that will go up there and then it'll be reseeded.
So give us a timeline of, of this. You wanna get these buildings in place for the fall. But you're not gonna do any. Marina work dredging before then, are you? How, how do you see that all coming together?
Just like I just said. So I plan on doing all the grading and making your. The conditions that you guys just said, you know, as far as grading and putting the plants and the trees and all that stuff. And then the mountains or the dirt on the hill will get added to when we do the dredging.
And you can do that when the buildings are in place?
Correct.
And when do you plan on dredging?
I'm really not sure yet, the perfect plans. Now, you're talking, you're talking four to $600,000 to dredge and. And it doesn't bring in one dollar. So that's kind of the last thing. And if we get some high water on this year, we wish we were dredged, right? I mean, it's pretty low out there. But if we get some high water years, it's probably gonna be last on the, um, thing. If we have to start having three to four years of it in order to run our business, we're gonna have to, it's gonna be just the way it is.
And you said, I believe you said that you will begin with the two building, the two buildings. In the lower section first. And then. When they're maxed out, build the two on top.
When completed, yes, that is correct.
What you see there?
That's what we said in the first meeting, yeah.
So completed or full? Once they're completed, you'll start.
They're, they're gonna be full. We have enough, we have enough to fill them. So, so that was just the process of, of we'll build this one. I'm not gonna start on all at once, you know what I mean? We'll build that one when it's fully completed, it's a complete barn. Start the other one, get it to complete barn, start that one, complete barn, start that, so we're from the bottom up. Um, cause as soon as that bottom one is done, now that grading is done down there and we can move that stuff down. You know what I mean? Get that cleaned up and we have the other, but I, I'm, I'm in the goal of, of completing all four buildings before fall, so I can fill them all.
For utilities to the buildings, so we know you're gonna need a left, are you planning on having sewer and water on there?
I do know.
Okay, and then, um, we asked this on everybody that gets up any type of barn. Um, we asked that you have a window for fire safety. So that's just what we would ask. And we've asked that of everybody who was put in a barn.
For storage barn?
Yeah. Yeah, even more scary.
So it was.
Probably twice.
Yeah, no, that, I would just ask that each building. And that's a fire, it's just like for fire safety and we've asked that for other things, so certain signs or, nope.
Well, I think the preference would be for more windows, but I don't know if he's in favor of that from a security perspective.
Yeah, right.
But the idea is to provide some ambient light inside in case somebody is.
Yeah.
Gets in there and needs to get out.
And I'm assuming that you'd be having ridgements.
It'll be pole barn, yeah, so you're gonna have your shop with, uh, sealed ceiling at all.
I have a question about, um. You had, uh, asked for signage last time, but you're not planning on having any signage up there?
I didn't, I didn't say that. I would.
No, okay.
I'm gonna do signage that was required. I just haven't done yet because I'm not gonna put a sign in the ground that we have to move for saving. Yeah, I understood that that was taken wrong.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, no, I plan on avoiding by all them conditions.
Okay, great, thank you.
Brandon, the plans show a security gate between the upper and lower. What's your thinking there, other than the obvious? That's it, I thought, sure. Now, well, it's the only.
Yeah, that's. Yes, okay, that's only to keep people from going down.
Okay, so when you then have the call, fire egress ingress. Is that something that somebody's gonna blow through or siret up?
Gush it down. I mean.
I just.
I, I don't know the answer to that. I, I guess you mean you could spray from the top of the hill if you needed to, but I guess any business that locks a gate up. Do fire trucks just drive through?
They'll cut the chain or.
Right, okay, so then maybe that's what they would do. I guess they would get there and then cut the line.
Yeah.
Yeah, you're asking me a question, I don't know. I'm, I know that businesses secure with gates.
I just didn't know if you were gonna actually go through with the gate or whether it was a vast stage of an old plant, okay?
Yeah, no, I, I.
You're gonna have some sort of security barrier.
Yeah, I'd like to stop people from going down there.
Okay.
And, cause that's the only spot that's got, you know, stuff like we said outside. Right, so if somebody wanted to go up and load up the decking that we have down there or something like that, it keeps them from going down there.
Okay.
Or they cut the gate. Keeps the honest people off.
Keeping us.
Architectural view as far as. Your artwork and all of that. However, as I pointed out. When Jacks, Captain Jacks wanted to put a mural on their wall. That you put the business name on it, it's now a sign. Jennifer wasn't happy, but she abided by that, so I'm assuming that your murals would not be advertised.
I'm thinking about something like me looking at my zoo, holding a fork or something.
American dog.
You should go do a slide.
Yeah, that's, that's okay, yeah. No, I, I, I haven't really put anything into the murals, but.
The murals that you cited are all of history. I don't like that theme, you know? I'm sure that the.
Yeah, I.
New, uh.
Put that rain.
The new village historian would be happy to work with you on ideas, you know, we could do the trestle.
I'll tell you, there is a French port. On the top of that hill.
Actually, they didn't go through planning.
It was, huh?
So there's a lot of history on that hill. The Indians used it as a campsite.
Well, there's no doubt about that, but like.
No, the tribe was actually tide sides. Tribe.
And no idea about a French port.
Yes.
Doesn't sound very Indian, does it?
Yep.
New tribe.
Tribe, yeah.
Well, there you go. Maybe these, you have some ideas about French ports. You know, I was thinking the trestle either before or during the fire, um.
There would be some, I'm assuming there's gonna be some type of water related murals.
And I realize the plan is to. But in place, but I gotta ask this question. As you will look at that northwestern building. Its proximity to the, to the bushes and the burn that you planted, it's pretty tight back there in the north corner.
And your guys' grading plan, or, or, or all of them bushes have gotta come out.
Okay, so are you gonna reorient that burn ultimately?
Yeah, I think if you go by what you just read, all them bushes have to come out. And they ought to be placed on the north side with burns. And then you guys don't want stone along Route fourteen, you wanna grass, it's weeping grass along.
But there won't be any trees there anymore?
I don't, I don't, I was just going by what you guys did.
Oh, no, oh, I, I hope there's trees.
Oh, yeah, I'm pretty sure you guys took them all out. Oh, but I'm serious. I, I think, I think it's not a row of trees, cause you guys didn't want that.
North, south, west.
You guys, when I, when I did it, you guys don't like this there. No, we just wanna pair. No, no, no.
Is that where?
Ranger, Ranger, Ranger.
Run into that work and wires.
What, what I read was north, south and west sides of open storage area. And next green, next of evergreen trees, height of six feet, ten room height. Uh, four feet on center or arbor lady and eight feet on center for fines. Um.
But that's on the western border.
Oh, it says north, south and west.
That's north, south and west.
Yeah, so that's west. So those, those.
They're, they're way closer than eight foot on center. They're like four foot on center right now.
Well, I was, I was asking more about the question, is there any ability on your part to shift the location of that building slightly east? You know, further away from the, from the, uh, road.
Nope. Cause you guys have a setback on the sewer. That runs.
Oh, is that the sewer?
Yeah.
Never mind.
You got it, thanks. About the window, um, now that I'm thinking about, window can be in the door?
It could, okay, for, it's for ventilation. Uh, and light.
But if it's in the door, it's, it's, you're not gonna have ventilation.
So it's a ventilation would be probably through the stoplights and stuff like that.
What we required in the past was, where we've seen the door. In case you're in the back and the fire is between you and the overhead door, so. Bruce Karen required, and with, uh, so this marina, we require them to have a man door or a window that you could escape out of.
Yeah, no, that makes perfect sense. I'm just saying, if I put a window or a man door on the other end.
That's perfect.
And it's got the.
Yeah, that's perfect. Yeah, that, that's, that's just like, yeah. It, it was like, it's up to you.
You just understand that now that has to have a light. So if it's sticking out on the north side, now there's a light shining towards the neighbor. I mean, I know it's shining out, but it's way on that side. It said on at all times on the.
Did?
Yes. I just wanted to make sure that you.
It doesn't have to be on the north side, it could be on the, at the back on the east.
I'm not gonna hide that door from the road probably, cause if somebody's gonna break in, it's gonna do you, so I'm gonna put it either on the north or on the.
West.
West, yeah. You know, or that northwest corner. Yeah.
In our original. And you already took care of the driveway egress. And materials, equipment, vehicles and disrepair for unusable condition of debris shall not be stored at the site. You're. Talk about your, um, building docks and all that. So, well, you got rid of most of that styrofoam. That was the biggest problem.
How about number eight?
Number eight, existing manhole covers, that's all the regrades.
Okay, so that one's, okay, I just wanted to.
Cause it makes sense for us, we're jumping around, let's start at number one, just check these off.
Sure.
What we're going to want to include, because this is a new.
Right, right, and that's why I said there'd be some additions and some drop.
Right, but we should go down one by one, we've been just.
Why don't you lead us through it?
Okay, so. Because it's, there are new elements to this project. I think we have to go back and look at. Um, the approval for the stormwater prevention plan that's left the DC. Uh, any of the, any of the items there in one. We need to at least review those and make sure that they apply to this new application.
Right, that's gonna be part of the engineer's job that.
Right, so that's, that's number one. Number two, we've spent a lot of time with the placement of the screen.
Right.
And we, we added that we wanted to extend it on the north side.
Extend it on the north side for the full length of the park.
Right, and then climbs to the east along the lower part of the area.
Right. Okay.
Yeah.
Uh, three, uh, we've all agreed, uh, with the, the fill, the finish off, the sloped areas with the top soil. And planning some kind of cover, crown.
Um, is that the area where you would add on top of that the dredged material?
We'll get that timing, but I was just, well, we're grading it right now.
He wants to do it because it's got a whole thing.
In place, yeah.
Uh, four, uh, on all. Really, on all sides, particularly the northwest and south slope, covered with, uh, some kind of weeping grass.
That's the crown brush, right?
Yes, the east side is, yeah.
You said one is crown fetch. Um, we're gonna wanna revisit the topographical map. It's, I guess inspected by the engineers. And we might take out the wording there of the. CPO, CPL, yeah. And what are we going to call this area now? Storage area?
Storage facility.
You got a better name, Brad?
Storage stall. So everywhere that we've used, uh, CPLS.
Yeah.
I'm assuming that the stormwater.
What, which number are we on now? Six.
Six.
Okay.
I'm assuming that the, because it's changed with the buildings or on there. It is, we're gonna have to look at the stormwater management, cause the runoff's gonna be.
Right, and it has, still go to, you can see.
Uh, signage. Um, it's no longer gonna be signage indicating it's commercial lot. But some kind of signage designating this. Tide side storage here.
So there's, uh, it, it says, uh, we use only by tide side. And customers, do you envision customers going in there?
On a, on a regular basis, probably not, but if somebody does wanna pick up their boat, right, I mean, if, if they're, I'll say.
Is somewhere they're selling it?
Yeah, there's a doing, I'm not seeing so many, I could say, hey, I can meet you up there.
Yeah, but do you anticipate, uh, like the other marinas do, guys got their boats in there? Guys going in there during the winter or early spring and working on their boat undercover?
I don't know, we don't have that now.
No, you don't now, but.
I mean, at our marina, I, I had lots of boats there and.
Okay, because.
Many, maybe I'll just, yeah. And a wrap up.
I know, that's a good practice, just stay with. Yeah. Keep people.
It's the sailors who wanna get in.
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly. You probably wanna say for use only by mark and tide sides, you're to the extent that you accompany somebody.
Yeah.
Right, yeah.
So, these buildings are locked.
Yeah, exactly.
I mean, they. They're not just gonna, you're not gonna pull in there and open the door and go in. And I mean, you'd, you'd have to have one of us with you.
Right. Yes. Eight, we do away with.
Yes.
Nine, we do away with. Yeah, unless there's some reason to, to provide some directional traffic flow, but once again, it's gonna be your own people only. Right, so. I don't think strike is gonna be needed. And that, I think you've addressed the. Driveway entrance. By expanding. Right, that was done early on.
Yes.
Right, those were. Okay, number eleven, still have some discussion there. About materials, equipment. Vehicles and disrepair. Are in unusable, unusable condition, the debris shall not be stored at the site.
I think that needs to be defined more. Well, so I just, while we were sitting here, I looked up the definition of marine construction equipment in New York State. So it's anything that is for building and any repairing structures in or near the water. And it basically includes. They referred me to the Marine Construction Magazine. And there is a long list of stuff.
Yeah, there's barges, cranes.
Right.
Pile drivers.
But yeah, I mean, it's like everything.
Excavators, hoists, winches, pontoons.
I don't think we've really.
Except for my, my patients, I do more than just marine construction.
Right.
No, but I don't think we're prepared to have those types of pieces of, of equipment stored down there. Cause you have been putting those. Pardon me?
So you don't wanna drill rig down there?
Yes, yes. A derrick, no, okay, not even derrick spreader.
But we don't have a definition in our code for marine construction equipment, so how can we limit what is down there?
We can, that's we.
Define it ourselves.
Define it and then send it to the village to amend. We wouldn't be writing, uh, we, we intend to. Which is passed across us.
And that, that number eleven, is that intended to be? Whatever these things are, that big long list, are they intended to be inside and covered up by the, like they're just in the yard? They're gonna be down below in that quiet out area, okay?
And there's no doubt that he's gonna wanna keep sheet pile. Down here, okay, he's gonna wanna keep those, uh, six inch pipes that he, that he drives for docks and builds.
That's, that's not true as far as the pipes, cause I just don't wanna go and knock and tape them on the road again. File, he's correct, there'll be, there'll be steel sheets stacked. You know, so we can use them, there'll be used boat lifts. Um, when, when we put in a brand new, if you have a boat lift that you place, and you're like, you wanna know what I need to get out of there? I take them, we put them up there. I put them online for a little while, if they don't sell, I smash them, and I scrap them, I get rid of them. So that's where I, I keep the boat lifts, so we're talking, like, it is a saleable thing.
But like, what's a timeline? Like, okay, if I don't sell them two months, if I don't sell them for like three years.
Well, depends, I mean, they're junk, I, I say, you know, like five hundred bucks, get it pretty much. And if, if it doesn't go, when we have enough of them, we, we take them, because I don't want it stacked up like. If it's full of junk, I can't put good stuff there. Um, decking material is, is something that we keep. Our, our decking that we put on every dock is a lifetime warranty product. And it's expensive, so when I, if, if your dock is a. You know, a ten foot dock, and it has ten foot landing, we were, you know, sixteen footers for it. I put, I cut them, boards down, now I have six foot boards left over. They get put on a skid, then get put up, cause then Bill wants his dock six foot in that color, now I have them and I just throw them away. So there's, there's minimum, I've been doing that. For over, you guys can barely see that, so because we go through it, as soon as I see it, I'm trying not to buy new stuff. I'm going up there and de- diminishing that pile, so a lot of stuff that you see up there is. I, I wasn't able to touch it, you know what I mean? A lot of that stuff hasn't been cleaned up, because I'm joking, not a lot of it touched. Anytime I go up there, Brian's called D C on me last week and said I was up there, never went up to that site, ever. You know what I mean? D C called me and asked about that, asked, oh, Marina, they asked about it. Anytime that I told things to my own property, I get called on, ever. So if the last thing I'm gonna do until this is all approved is go up there and try to clean it up, because I'll be. Blown in again, so a lot of that stuff, like you said, them boat lifts, a lot of them can come off. But when you say how long, a couple of them are very good lifts, you know what I mean? So. I, I've given money to them and I gotta use lift, but we haven't sold them, you know, we can try to sell new stuff, so if it's, you know. Um, we don't keep old stuff, uh, you know, as, as much as, I guess I'm trying to paint that picture. We're like Dunkin' Donuts or like McDonald's, if we make you, you know, we, we don't give stuff away for free. If I smash it, you have to buy new, you know what I mean? That sandwich is made wrong, I don't give you that free sandwich, so you're full. So. We get rid of these stuff, anytime I can get it, I, I smash it, because I don't wanna put this used stuff on the line, and I can't stand by it with a warranty. So, I, 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 I'm not in the process of, of keeping old stuff up there, if that's what you're asking.
But I understand that, I think what we're trying to, and thank you for, I think what we're just trying to make sure of is how do we make. Make sure by conditioning properly like that.
Yeah, and I'm struggling with what the zoning board. Disapproved or disallowed, I guess is a better way to say it, in, in their approval. They said no marine equipment storage, okay?
Right, so we just said.
In my vocabulary, marine equipment. Yeah, marine equipment includes.
Tops.
Up top.
Yeah, up tops.
No.
No, it's just lower level, on lower level, stored on lower level, like you sort it down.
No, you have three bullets, yeah, four bullets, grab it. One bullet said no outside lighting. One bullet said no marine equipment storage. Another bullet said no parking boats, cars, R Vs outside the buildings on the upper level. Fourth bullet said marine construction equipment.
If you were in the.
Restricted to the lower level requirement.
Correct, everything that has to be, they're just not allowing anything on the upper, nothing.
So there's a distinction to be made between marine construction equipment and marine equipment storage?
I understand, I understand that your bulletin sounds, sounds, from my understanding, I can't put anything other than, like, you know, like. I can't put anything on the upper level that's got to do with marine construction, I can't put the list, I can't put the materials, I can't put R Vs, I can't put. Cars, whatever, whatever that list was, I can't put any of that on the upper level, and I don't believe I can.
If there's a question about those minutes too, those are just draft minutes that you're referring to, so they haven't been approved yet. So just, if there's a question about it, make sure you send it to the zoning board for clarity before they get approved at the next meeting.
But wait, wait, as we look at number eleven. It's, it's not clear to me, we need clarification from the, from the zoning board. I don't know that we're gonna solve that here tonight.
Sorry, I just, I guess, and maybe, maybe Kevin can do it, but when my research. I don't believe you guys. I don't believe you guys can touch that. You know what I mean, that's. That's part of the special use permit that I was approved for, with them conditions, I don't think you can put more conditions on it.
Uh, I was asking what it means.
What it meant, I got, I understand what you're saying, but.
Yeah, we need clarification from them.
Because, because the, the zoning board. Put those on, okay, in addition to looking at the nineteen that we had there already. Okay, so they, they said in addition to the nineteen, basically, is my understanding is what they were doing. Okay, again, I think we need clarification on it, but that's my understanding.
I'm looking, I was gonna say.
Let's move on to twelve, uh, we talked about lighting. Uh, for lighting.
We're just have to follow code.
Yeah, uh, yeah, and. And I think this lighting, because it was a parking lot, was a different kind of lighting, from what we've just talked about. So. The lighting in this instance, and I don't even know. Maybe we put it here.
Bill, I'm, I'm just questioning, isn't some of this, I have to follow by code anyways? Like what, like if we're filing the code, why, why do we put it again?
Yeah. Yeah, I, that's why I'm saying, twelve was. When it was.
Yeah, so why not just get rid of it?
Versus the building.
So then does the county have to get rid of this on there now? Yeah.
I, I would assume that I have to do it with code and not with zoning, but.
Yeah.
Right.
I think we. Let's do it with thirteen stored materials or stacked equipment. Not to exceed a certain height, like we use eight feet, maybe being a safe height. Something isn't gonna. Tackle over.
Is there code for that too? Because you would think that.
You know.
Cause you would think there should be, right? Cause you could stack a bunch of stuff eight feet tall, and depending on how you stack it, it would or wouldn't be steep.
Through my processes, we've found a lot of things we should.
Well, farmers don't worry about stacking bins. Yeah.
Right, we stack them as high as we can reach them.
Higher. Yeah, one more. Fourteen doesn't seem to be relevant any longer.
No, no.
And we can't go to fifteen till. Till we do everything in one. Is that right? Well, I guess that, that does raise a question for me, fifteen. Is this your final? Proposed use of this property?
Yes.
Final. Final answer.
I mean, you know, can it change in fifteen years, right? I, I don't know, you know what I mean, but, but yeah, I know, I don't, I don't have any plans of. Otherwise it would be on there, we, we've already tried it down there, already got denied, you know what I mean, you know, several times, so this is what we found works.
Very. On the site. We don't have.
We don't have those because.
What I do, we want that. Down there.
Yeah. So we read that.
Yeah.
Uh, we already said we were taking out the table uses. That was referenced.
So. Just a quick question. You know how Trentors up the road have. I think part of their inventory. Their boats that are for sale, I think. Um, do you anticipate, um, showcasing? Your boats and trailers that you have for sale? On the property along the road?
So I anticipate.
It's not allowed to have anything outside, so.
Well, on the upper levels, yeah, I mean, but maybe the business plan said, geez, uh, I'll do what, I'd like to do what Trentors is doing.
Yeah, I don't, we don't currently sell boats.
Well, you don't sell any?
We, we sell Honda outboard motors, so we re-motor.
You did have a few, go to one of your own.
We, we sell, we sell used boats, and we sold pontoons for a while, we, we no longer sell. New boats.
But you still sell new.
Yes.
So any inventory wouldn't. You're not planning on moving any of that?
I don't plan on showcasing them out there, and that's, I mean, if, if you're gonna do or ship sometime and you put a nice one up there that looks. Looked nice coming into town, I don't think that would really be a bad thing, an eyesore. Yeah, no, no, I guess, I guess I just, right now, I, Bill, I don't sell them, so, so the answer is no, but if someday I did sell them, I guess. It wouldn't be a bad place to, to show up, if do, I think I'm gonna line the road with them, no.
Number seventeen.
Change storage for no one else.
Uh, eighteen. There's a keeper. Nineteen. Eighteen, nineteen, yeah, we have to keep those. You don't have the rest of, yep, you got the good place there, Brad.
My God.
Eighteen is the approved resolution conditions that will be added to. Adding here, adding to the site plan.
I got, I appreciate it.
And Mike Jean addresses. Michael will sign off.
Does it make sense? For number two? Number three? Or. Does it make sense for those to be incorporated into a landscape plan?
And maybe both would, so it's more clear, easier to make.
Well, I'm, I'm talking about a picture. Okay, a landscape plan that actually, sort of like the site plan, but it, but it's of the landscaping.
Well, it would have to be in the site plan, so just like.
It'd be a page of the site plan, yeah.
Just like we are writing.
Yeah, like it was originally.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You can kinda see them.
This, this was the old one that have showed.
Yeah, here's.
Yeah, exactly.
I like the size of that one better.
And so do I, I was trying to get bigger copies, Brandon knows that. Alright, so do you wanna motion?
Uh, one more question, if I could. Brandon, what is, so the, the graphic that came this part of the package showed a blue building on a very green. Match of brass or something like that, what, what are the intended colors? Of these buildings? I think it matters, is why I'm asking the question.
It matters.
It's, it matters, I think, buildings can be, can be white elephants. Uh. Or worse, uh, or it can be made somewhat appealing, okay? You put a little cube around some of the, on top of a couple buildings, it looks entirely different than this. Long lateral line that never ends, okay?
I understand, I think it's gonna be, you're, you're correct, um, as far as color. I'm gonna go with probably our business colors, or something along what we already have, like our main building is gray with a blue.
So they'll be the same color?
That would make sense.
No, but it would, to try to tie businesses together, it would make sense, or they're gonna be completely blue, right? Or blue with a gray, you know, or something along them.
Yeah, but you've also gotta line green if your business colors.
Yeah.
We don't want something that's gush.
Yeah, pardon me? I'm sorry, don't want sentiments.
We gotta tell everybody that.
The more it goes away, the better, uh, I.
No, I think it's colors, it's really.
Architectural approval, but.
Yeah, I'm not.
I'm just letting you know our preference that I like the color. We're just letting you know our preference, that I like the color that you have on your buildings down at the market. They they don't stick out or.
But the dark green?
I don't have dark green, I have gray and blue with white trim.
For the old ones directly.
I don't.
Any more?
No, I'm just saying, I'm not going to put painted down or anything.
The restaurant.
Do you remember the yes, yeah, the restaurant was in yellow, restaurant, and I painted it blue.
Okay. I just want. I want you to think about what you would like, so that we can we can look at it. And say. Would you be, would you consider something else or not? Okay?
Yes.
And and sides and roof same color, so monotone or.
I mean, I like I like making the roof and the sides different colors, yeah, and I like the trim usually, you'd be like a white, so it smells like something along with what I do.
Yes.
All right. What I would like to do first is get a motion. Directing Village to hire. An engineer.
I would ask the lowest.
An affordable engineer.
The last time I was creating.
Well, I'm aware of the gouging that went on and given as I've already discussed.
Okay, I mean, that's why I put it in there.
Well, no, that's very. Yeah, yeah.
I already researched it, I already had that discussion.
I make a motion that we authorize the village to hire an energy, an engineer. To review plans. And that the engineer be reasonably priced.
Our plans, we want the site plan, we want the speaker.
And compliance with the SWAT.
Yes. Yeah. Um. A second. I don't care. Yes, well, as I still, Brandon, I was made aware of the price gouge that went on last time and. Given I already. Discuss that and we'll do our best to avoid.
Yeah, that's what I said, I mean, reasonable is. Taken all over the place, that's what I said, lowest, lowest, people bid for it.
So are you more interested in get a fixed price or are you more interested in our own rate?
I don't think that's our.
Well, I'm just saying in terms of of offering that advice to to the village.
I'm assuming it would be your fifth person, you know, paying.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah.
Do we need to vote on that?
Better do a second.
Who did? Yeah.
Okay. In that case, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion has passed. Here, next one. I'll leave. Grounded list. What I would like to do, and Brandon may not like it, I'd like people to sleep on it tonight. Send me any things. That you think needs changed, I will contact Brandon, we will discuss it. And. When would you review?
Would you also, as part of that effort, Bruce, speak to. Uh John Johnson from zoning?
I will talk to them, maybe next Monday, um. If you want, maybe we could meet on Tuesday. The next one.
I am not available.
Wednesday. Well, um, yeah.
I'm available on Wednesday, the thirtieth.
Yes or no?
Yes.
So we're we're only gonna meet to go over what we've just gone over.
Right, it will be a short meeting. But I don't wanna.
Sure, sure, tonight, yeah, I agree.
Well, I I.
We do need to spend more time.
For next week, there's no reason to wait.
I think you, for you says, you want zoning, so there you can.
Well, we only need to know what zoning, what they're, and they should know that right now.
We need for open meetings law, we have to give, that's what I was thinking.
The problem was. It's not official until our amendments are official.
Right.
So.
Right, but we will know. If there's any amendments to those amendments, probably.
I will try and get that. I mean, you should.
Well, I I think also, though, minutes aren't as comprehensive as we may want to understand. Necessarily.
Well, this will give them time to.
To make them comprehensive, all right.
So what time from the third date?
Uh what time, what? Six, six thirty?
Yeah.
This is all we're gonna do, which one?
Six thirty.
Your advertising for a special meeting is what you want me to do?
Six thirty, what day? Wednesday, the thirtieth.
Steve.
Thank you.
You're muted.
And it kind of.
Anybody's invited, so I didn't need.
Steve, will you be able to join us?
Invitation.
No, it's.
Didn't catch, I didn't quite catch the date.
April thirtieth.
Yeah, yes.
Okay, six thirty.
Do you guys want to do a special meeting on April thirtieth at six thirty?
Yes, please.
Okay, um let me just think about this, so Sunday. Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, okay, yeah, I have enough time for it.
Great.
All right. Uh we generally need a minute.
Would you like a motion for adjournment?
I would.
Still moved.
Wait, 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 I I didn't catch it, did for sure you made a motion to table the application? Did I hear that or no?
No, we did not.
Okay, before you motion to adjourn, uh make a motion to table the application if you could.
Um, no, we we didn't get a second, I I make a motion that we table this until our April thirtieth meeting time.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? There is no opposition, it is passed, I'll back team adjourn.
I moved that be adjourned tonight's meeting.
So we'll take all of the favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed? It is adjourned.
Perfect, thank you guys, have a good night.
Thanks for tuning guys on us.